We do not.
Okay, now let's get right into it.
Okay, building and engineering, that's on page seventy-seven, it starts, that's the overview. This is CE bring, one thing I'll bring your attention, on page seventy-eight, some of these fees for inspectors and such, these are offset by revenue accounts, so just to let you know that. It's awful flat. Now, you also know that some of the engineering charges go with the projects, right? There's always an engineering fee put in with the projects, and that's kind of how they did out, right? There's not much in there, it's pretty darn flat, so. Okay? If there's no questions with that, we'll community development, which is page seventy-five. That's where it starts here. As you know, we use, the community development is done by our outside.
Carlisle Workman?
Yep, Carlisle Workman. What you'll notice is on page seventy-six, that the part-time salaries do not show up here anymore because those were code enforcement and transferred to police. So you'll see the increase in the police, and then looking at the budget, that's the major decrease. Everything else is awful flat in there. Okay? And the contractual services, you know, are the same as last year, so, on seventy-six. Any questions with that? Okay, let's move to recreation, page seventy-nine. Couple of notes in here, halfway down, the pension contribution, that's increased, we can't control that. The part-time labor is up, and I'm sure, you know, that's budgeted that way, but we can't get that way. I know Todd's throw them into our position, and our part-time, so we didn't expend that. And then, down here, about halfway down, the special event supplies, that's increased for the summer fest. And then, as we know, and then, and then the summer fest fees are down here, but if you flip back to page forty-two real quick, just wanted to do a flip back to forty-two, you will see where we are recording about, at the very bottom, summer fest revenues, you've got forty-two thousand in that, and then you've got corporate donations of thirty thousand. So you got the sponsorships that cover the summer fest expenses.
Is that in page forty-two?
Yes, correct. And just to let you know too, Todd has been, I kind of suggested a couple of years ago, as the summer fest is growing, just to make sure that we're covering our costs because it's the last thing you want to do is throw a city party and have it cost the rest. So he's done a financial statement, I know with Rob, and Todd has put it together, and each year, we show that we take in more revenue than expense. And that's with, correct Todd, allocating the part-timers, the DPW for all that help, it's kind of like a full absorption cost, so we make sure that everybody that participates in the summer fest, it's covered, so that we can book it back, so we can show it. So, at least the last two years that I was involved with it, in three sixty productions, which is an outside source that we use with sponsorships, that's what's helping us with our sponsorships, and kind of helps Todd a little bit on kind of the setup and stuff. It's Todd's show, he does a great job with it, but I mean, he also gets her help with that, so she's really good. So she's paid a stipend fee, and then she gets a percentage of the sponsorship she sells, so Todd's on top of that, he watches that.
But yeah, we make some money, I don't think that's possible.
No, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it's always to the positive.
But I think, always, my thing is, if you break even, then we're doing good.
And, and the thing is, is why I'm telling you this, is because it was very important to me, coming from where I came from, that you don't charge residents taxpayers for a party, right? I mean, you got to be able to cover your costs, so. And it's a good community thing. I, I think it's, it's great, it's grown the last couple of years, and Todd continues to grow it with different vendors and potential food trucks.
And those three years, we eliminated it because the accounting stuff got so bad.
Well, he couldn't do it without the corporate sponsorships, so that, you know, we get revenue from the carnival, we get revenue from corporate sponsorships. And Todd, do we take any revenue from the beer sales? I know we have a five oh one C three.
Yes.
So we do, okay.
Yes, we do.
Okay. I wasn't sure, because I didn't know exactly the arrangement in review, how they do that, so. But we're on schedule, they have it again this year, the weekend of, what, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, I think?
Yeah, fifteen, sixteen.
Okay, I'm sorry, fifteen, sixteen. But it's the same weekend, so I'm hopeful, you know, we'll start doing our sunshine dance for that whole week, so the course gets it ready, and summer fest, okay.
Jeff, do you have a question?
Yeah.
So I see summer fest in these, but what about winter fest? What does that one mean?
Todd, how does, where does?
It's under the special events budget.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have to separate that one out, so like the concerts, the pay rides, or things like that, the tree lighting, I have a lot of other questions about that.
Thank you.
That's a good question. And also, Todd, did you leave the carts in there for this year too, since we didn't get them?
Yes.
Okay. I've asked Todd to budget for a couple used carts, if I come across them in the golf world, because we really need some carts for moving potential people to the concerts.
You thought about a four-person cart?
Yes.
Okay. Does everyone get some discussion at the hundredth anniversary of, you know, get all these elderly people around, that they may need some transport and regular golf carts for?
Correct. So I was looking for a four, or a six, and then we were looking for one cart with a back that has like a cargo space, that he can put his waters in, and I mean, since you have so many things going on at the park now, with summer fest, winter fest, concerts, that we really need that. So I'm shopping, I mean, we're not going to buy new, but it's hard to find a solid, you know. But we do have a good mechanic now, and we also can paint, so maybe if we buy one that needs a little bit of work, we can put the time and effort into it to make it look good, so. All right? All right, now we're done. I think that's pretty much recreation, I don't have anything else in. Oh, and that big park improvement on page eighty-one, Todd, I believe the ninety thousand, still probably some rubber mulch that we're still?
Uh, mulch projects, we're looking to, we need to start re-looking at trenches, picnic tables, a lot of things like that, that are getting worn right now.
We didn't spend much of the budgeted amount last year, but we also reduced it significantly.
Are you the department head's member from the youth team?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, department head, when you're done, you can leave, so there's no need to stay the whole night. Thank you for reminding me of that. I screwed that up yesterday as well.
You shouldn't have to sit here.
No, and I screwed that up yesterday. Okay.
Do rubber mulch go into all the parks, or is that just focusing on?
Well, I'll let Todd answer that exactly, but my understanding is-
It was, is the plan that at some, progressing down the line, yes, we will get it to all the parks.
Okay.
It would not be all this year, no, it would be progressing over multiple years.
And, and you did do some last year?
Uh, we did do the tree lighting part last year.
Yeah, it's expensive.
Yeah, but it's still worth it.
Look, but I will say on that, I know it costs money. I think it's a great idea though, because just from this year to last year, the weeds pulled every limb park alone, took like three and a half hours. And now that rubber mulch, there's nothing in there. That park was cleaned up in like forty minutes, so it made, it made a huge difference. If we can, that's, that's, that's awesome. Good job on that.
I know Todd has, in the past, also used the labors from the landfill to help with some of the park maintenance. And, you know, with the park maintenance, you got to be careful with the spraying of the chemicals, because of the kids and all of that, so there's, you can't use the same chemicals at the golf course, as you can at the park, so. I mean, we use some, a derivative of that, a real water down amount that you can buy at any store, but it's not golf course. When we have spray.
Do, do we use the same stuff that the schools use on their properties?
I believe so. I believe so. I know it's not, you know.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, young patriots will spray early in the morning with a lesser, you know, product. It's still regulated, but it's lesser, and we put the signs out, so around the park we'll be spraying. Trying to work on getting the park, we're using the old spray at the golf course, trying to get the park around the late cart path, or the walkway, and the concert area back in the tubes, so when visitors come, they can see that. And we got lots of compliments last year on the park, so I hope that we can keep that going. Okay, so now we're down to public works, sixty-seven, page sixty-seven, where that starts. Okay, Department of Public Works, where's mine? You know, we had a little bit of slight increase in the wages, a decrease in the part-time salaries as we go through there. Of course, health insurance is up a little bit, but really, in total, the public works budget is down slightly, so that's good budgeting. I know, this is another occurrence that we've asked the DPW director to, you know, budget to actual instead of, you know, what he might expect. With the idea that should something come up, you know, you don't want to do it. Won't have to make an amendment if it's larger or what have you, but that's kind of the idea. Are there any questions in there? There just wasn't any major changes, so.
So there's been not, really no, and let's just look at the street lighting, that's been pretty consistent. Didn't we convert that to LEDs years ago, and it's supposed to be big savings that never?
Well, I don't know when those numbers were before twenty twenty-one. When did, Jeff, when did we, or is that what that number is, Jeff, the street lighting, the city face for all the?
That's correct.
And when did you change it to LEDs?
We did.
Oh!
Council voted down the, to change Ford Street, streetlights.
I remember the Ford Street, yeah.
I can tell you that, and I don't know if Jeff knows this, and Ohio knows this, but it's really about a three-year payback too, only. I know, we did that, you know, I did that at other places, rinks and parking lots, and different places, and we saw a payback in three years, so. After the third year, it was like, I mean, we saw immediate payback, but after three years, the cost of all the lighting was already paid for, so. That's probably something that we should revisit again.
When did we do that? Does anybody remember?
It was, remember Dean, five, six? Well, when, when Ford Street was redone, that's when we had the option of doing it then, and we-
Yeah, better in the electrical, which was, how many million did it cost?
Yeah.
So that's something that, moving forward, we could possibly do in stages?
Jeff, how does that work? Can you comment on that? Because I don't know how.
We would have to contact Ever Kane from DTV, and have a meeting with her.
Communication was burying all the electrical and the shared facilities, like the cable TV. That was going to cost so much money to put conduits underground, bury all of it. That's what made it kind of cost prohibitive at the time, although we were going to realize some rebates for the lighting, but the cost of burying the infrastructure was very high.
So it's not just taking one bulb, but twisting in an LED?
Well, we did some of that. We did convert some of the high-pressure sodium back to LED on the fixtures themselves, but we did not bury the lighting, change the bolt that you wanted to. And that was very high cost at the time, so.
Okay. All right. So that's public works, let's get down to building maintenance, that is on page sixty-nine, that's just the next page, which again, that is a small decrease in the total, but very flat. This is an allocation of salaries, really, you know, there was really no, you know, large jump in any one line item, because it decreased, so. Don't really have anything marked up on the sheet, so. Any kind of questions with that? I'm assuming that they probably sent them to me anyhow, and I didn't get any on that, I got them on different things, but not that, so. All right? Vehicle maintenance, this, you know, really not represents one person, we have one mechanic, correct, Jeff?
Correct.
Yep. And this is kind of the, the account. Now, if you go down, and I had to have Peter explain this to me, if you go down to the vehicle fuel and maintenance, that's a negative number, because that all gets reallocated to departments based on the use. So that's kind of fuel and maintenance. I don't, Jeff, I understand this, because you take care of all, your department, I'm not saying you, but your department takes care of all license-placed vehicles in the city.
Correct.
Yeah. And they do help out with non-licensed for the landfill, like the trucks that take the gentleman to the top of the hill to work for the day, and come down.
So this one sixty-nine is actually billed out to all the other departments for the vehicles?
Correct. Yeah, so that's how that works. Kevin was kind enough to tell me that, and show me how that all gets done, so. So, there's a decrease in contractual services, which is very flat. Jeff did the best he could to keep the cost down, and, and again, should something weird happen, we'll have to address it as it happens. All right. Park maintenance, this is boat ramp, tennis courts, pickleball courts, ice rinks. We don't have ice rinks anymore, do we? Well, I guess we do, regular park, right?
Kind of, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We patriots, if it gets cold now.
Yeah, okay.
Then we tried it a few years ago, in some of the parks, and it didn't work very well.
Well, what I learned about ice rinks, that unless you have a alternative source of cooling that, it just doesn't work. Dearborn, back in the eighties and nineties, bought all kinds of refrigeration systems from the army, and then their DPW would install them, and put sand over them, and they'd have like a little box, which was their compressor and cooling, but it took a lot of labor hours to set those park rinks up. They had like three outdoor ice arenas. And then the question was, how do you clean them and keep them smooth and all of that? So, I remember playing out there on those, you know, we would just go and play, to put lights up and the whole thing, so. I know in the city that I came from, tried it at Heritage Park, they moved their outdoor arena to Heritage Park, and they had the fire department flooding it, and used some kind of a plastic, and just never made it, you know. So, if you don't have an alternate source to make an ice rink, it's pretty difficult.
So, but I, I do see in here, it says, seventy-three, grass cutting will be performed by part-time workers at the city, so we're going to have part-time workers instead of any maintenance to the parks? Is that what that means?
I think it's in supplement too. No? That's city-owned property that we have, the part-timers cut, right? Isn't that correct, Jeff?
No, the, the part-timers mostly, so the two part-timers we have at the DPW, we should be starting shortly, mostly cut grass on Ford Street, and then cut some grass for the code department. All the other city grass is cut by the contractor.
Okay.
All right.
And we get reimbursed with a Ford Street cutting, correct?
Correct.
So we go with Wayne County, and they pay us?
Yep. Correct.
I think seven dot.
Yeah. Okay, so it was a slight decrease, there's not much change there at all. Police, there's some changes in police, that's on page fifty-nine. Well, the first change that we'll see. Can you get there? I have, okay, so you'll see on, wait a minute there, okay, you'll see on page number sixty-one, the top, that's that part-time salaries increase, that's code enforcement. And now Chief is budgeted to the officers in the write-up, you'll see that he's got a budget for actual plus two, correct, Chief?
Uh, there's, we're budgeted for actual twenty-three, the two that were eliminated, not really eliminated, but we haven't had deputy chief in two years, and we haven't had somebody in the DEA in several, several years, so I wanted to budget and reflect it there.
Okay. But, what are we talking about? Because is that the airport?
Correct.
Yeah. So we love to have someone back, because we'll talk about the forfeiture fund very soon. We need to rebuild that, because it's kind of, going to have to come from somewhere, so. Much better to come from there. So, decrease in the overtime, increase in accrued payoff, which means they're planning on somebody retiring, is that correct, Chief?
Well, Lieutenant Bemis can go whenever he feels that he wants to go, so we did budget for that, just in case.
Okay. Okay, so that's that line item.
Which, which line item was that?
Accrued payoff.
Accrued, I think.
Yep. It's one oh one, three oh one, seven two five. Okay? Contractual services are done, we just decrease that in his budget. Chief, talk about the code enforcement, why we felt, you know, through the mechanics of moving it back to the police with the systems and the whole stuff, with being able to look up and process the paperwork through your computer system.
Yeah, as we had it set up, they weren't over, the law enforcement wasn't being managed by law enforcement, so they couldn't run, have access to lean, which they need lean work, which means that they run a plate, they get the plate information back, the person rolls the house. They weren't privy to that stuff, unless they were under the umbrella of the police department, so that's why.
So they, they're still located up here front with redevelopment, but they work with the police department, and Chief kind of is aware of when they're writing, where they're at, that kind of thing, so. Seems to work out so far so good, right?
So far so good, thanks to Dave. Dave is a good worker, and he's informed, and takes care of business.
Okay. Page seven, and page, okay, so that, you know, the total of four point four million is down three hundred thousand, so even with the pickup of, I'm sorry, it's, it's slightly up, like a major increase, if you take out the code enforcement, the budgets actually decrease, so. Any other questions?
I just have one.
Yep.
With the decrease in overtime, which is a great thing, is that because we're at twenty-three now?
Yes, that's what it should be.
We're not at twenty-three yet.
We'll be at twenty, right, and somebody, two weeks from yesterday, and then we're hopefully going to hurt somebody after that, so.
Perfect.
Yes, we should be up to twenty-three.
But then drop it because we're getting more and more?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. My chief is here, why don't we talk about the drug forfeiture fund on page one oh three, we'll go out of a little bit of a litter.
Well, thank you.
And you can go home. Now, of course, the drug forfeiture fund historically has paid for?
What page is that in?
One oh three, one oh five, I'm sorry, it's one oh five now, it's a number, one oh three it's called. I don't know, Heather, can you, can you talk about how large this fund was just five years ago, seven years ago, roughly? I mean, you've been around it for a long time.
It was very good size, like three hundred thousand maybe plus, but we've been taking the police cars out of that one, so it doesn't have to come out of the general fund, and it doesn't come out of the four oh two fund.
So, with that being said, we're going to have to figure something out, because there's no budget this year for any new police cars, which, you know, police can't go forever. It's not like you can get ten years out of a police car, so.
But even if we provided an officer in the airport now, it'll be years before we realize the forfeiture money.
Right, right. It's not tomorrow, right, Chief? I mean, it's-
No, it takes a lot of years, like, I don't know how many years we've been out of it, but we have eight thousand dollars coming through us soon, so.
Yeah, we've been up for a long time.
Yeah.
We have, like five, it seems like eight years or something.
So it takes a long time to get the, those funds, but then once we get them, then they start steadily?
Yeah.
It depends on how they're adjudicated through the court system. We usually get a percentage if, if they're found in violation.
Okay.
We had about five hundred thousand dollars a couple of years ago, and we're down to two hundred, but that's, seventy of it's allocated already right now.
Okay.
But I, I think the, the point is that if we don't get anything, we don't have somebody there.
Right.
That's almost a mileage point, Jimmy, that one, right?
Three hundred.
So we, we've got to fix that, and, you know, we've got to start looking at our budgeting, and we'll talk about that in later pages, as you'll see. We've moved a lot of the landfill out, you know, further, and, and people in the committee know we're working with the BoMAG situation, but-
Right.
The Lee Bears, and the Dozers, and things like that, we pushed out, just so we can have a reprieve from some of those payments for a little while, but sooner or later, it comes.
It was November two thousand eighteen.
What's that?
The last time, yeah, somebody.
Wow.
Seven hundred, almost.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Well, that's my wish, soon as we get up the snuff.
Well, especially listening to Heather talk, if you don't have to pull that money out for the vehicles, that has to help.
Yeah, and obviously, council's in the past have had issues with having an officer there, and every year, are you bringing him up every year to cover his pay? And it didn't always work that way, but I think the rest of us felt is, the experience they get from being there, they can pass it to other officers, and then eventually, you know, it might not be one-to-one every year, but eventually, you know, you're going to get some payout.
On the networking. And the networking portion of it too, you need a lot of other, that can be utilized.
Okay, well, I just wanted to bring your intention of the forfeiture funds down to thirty, you know. We're gonna have to figure out other sources to fund those police cars and police expenses, so. Okay? Alright, Chief, then you're done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Community block grant is one oh nine. Basically, the allocated expenses there, you know, the, the grant is, we're budgeting hopefully for the twenty thousand dollars. I don't know why we don't get it. It's just, I don't know if it's our projects or, or what, but it was given, where we used to be that we used, you know, other cities just get it, so, trying to figure that out.
Well, I thought, may I correct you, I thought we always got that, that was at least the twenty grand and it was on a rotating basis.
Do we always get it, Dave?
Get the twenty.
Okay, okay.
Twenty grand standard, but they did have, they were supposed to give us a hundred thousand dollars in five years.
Like every five, yes.
Yeah.
So far, we
They have an input grant project.
Mark Kibbe's trying to work on it. We can't figure out why the county's not giving us, and we feel it's our right to get it.
They didn't start with the county to go.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, and then, and then, well, I think it's too deep in the weeds. They, they took it over because, you know, obviously
They wanted the money.
There was administrative fees associated with it, so they just added up all the county's administrative fees.
That's a good way of saying, they wanted the money.
Allocated back to themselves.
Yeah.
Okay, well, the Down River Guidance Center, which we approved, that's in their senior alliance contribution and senior program, so.
When did the county take it over?
Roughly about five years. Six or four, five years now.
Yeah.
They slowly took it over, little by little, they started taking our responsibilities away and finally just took the hold.
Yeah. I remember they had some big meeting, it was at the DCC or something like that, where the, the county made some presentation and it just, to them, it just made more sense that they do it, it's more efficient and, you know.
Well, they argued that some of the cities weren't taking their money. Yeah.
Yeah.
That was the argument.
Really? Would anyone not take money?
Well, yeah, because they had to report on projects and stuff, the projects were held up and the money wasn't released at a proper time. So, they said, this is all garbage. We'll just decide how it's gonna happen. They don't give out any money.
What they used to do is when just city for review, just example.
She was our rep.
Yeah, it, back in the good times, um, when we got money, uh, if you didn't use the money allocated to your city, it went back into a, their coffers and then it got divided up and with all the cities. And the county decided they didn't like that. They wanted it. So, if you didn't use the money.
Even if you didn't use it.
The money that went to all the other communities, they decided, well, we want that.
Sorry, it was, it was nice.
So, they took that, then they took all of it.
Thanks. So, there's two parts to that program. There's the housing rehab part and then there's the C A P G part.
Right.
So, one is for doing projects like parks and stuff like that, and the other is for the people that are disadvantaged and don't have a very good income and can't afford like a roof. And something happens and it's not covered with insurance, then they would come to us.
Oh, okay.
And then we would do that and we would pay for it and then we put a lien on their house.
Oh.
So, when they sell their house or if they pass away, that money goes back to us and we don't add any interest penalties or anything onto it. It's whatever the cost was way back when it was.
But doesn't that last five years and then five years are stripped off?
No.
Or it used to?
I still have a list.
No, okay.
I'm the controller of the list.
They used to, Dave, you know, they take yours.
Yeah, you couldn't sell it, I think. It was a couple of years.
You, you had an elderly person that needed a roof or a furnace, they could come to us. We would fix it, turn it in, they'd put a lien on the house, and then after five years, they used to write that off. If you, they lived in the house for five years, she says they don't do that anymore. No, if, when first, when first got here, they had that five-year rule. So, if someone lived in the house for five years, there's something about payback, but that one, my, my first, my first guy here in two thousand nine, ten, somewhere in there. So, they did away with it? They did away with it. Now, we, we got a lien. Okay.
What's our balance on that, Heather, if you had to guess?
Pretty penny. No one ever does it.
Um, I honestly don't know because a lot of that list, it, nothing goes away on it. When you go pay it, we just note that it's paid. So, I don't have like a running total.
Okay.
It's just like a three-page list of addresses and names and what the dollar amount was.
But there are people who pay against that roof or that furnace or whatever.
Yep, that's where we get the oddball program income that comes in. It's for the, the liens that get repaid.
Okay. And again, it's a lien, cause I, I know that.
And here we've got twelve thousand, twelve hundred, or twelve thousand, two hundred that we've gotten recovered liens this year.
What page is that on?
One ten.
One ten, okay.
And then last year we get forty-two thousand and sixty-three dollars in repay liens.
So, you don't budget because it's not guaranteed, so you just
If it happens.
It happens, that's where it goes and then offset up here. Okay.
Most, most of the elderly panic when they hear they're getting, they own, they own their house. That's all they own, you know, the and then they hear we're putting a lien on your house and they absolutely panic. And then they'll go without a roof because they don't want lien on their house. They don't want payback. When you die, your kids sell the house, they
It comes out of your estate.
It comes out of your estate and you try to explain it to some elderly and they just
Lien is a bad word to use for that, for an elderly person.
According to Tom Selleck, you can re-borsh.
I wonder if he's got one.
Alright, building authority, we do not have a page for that, so that is not, I don't know why that's on. I'm sorry? Major Streets, page ninety-one? Ninety-one, ninety-two, and ninety-three, so that's our Act Fifty-One State Revenue, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Heather has a huge calculation, a sheet, that she computes this number of the Act Fifty-One from the tax rev-
Yep, it comes from the state and then we just have to plunk in, actually I think we still have it in here somewhere.
It's a heck of a sheet. We want, she wants me to look at how it's calculated, so we're following the procedures.
But you have to put in like how many miles you have of roads and then your population.
And is there a
And then ten percent of it is our admin fee that we're allowed to charge.
Yep, so if we have that as backup, should the state ask how we're budgeting that number, so. So, it's slightly up, of course, because the revenue is gonna be up, of course, so that's how we budget that. Then coming down to the expense side, you have a slight increase in joint crack sealing. Uh, street sectioning, actually has a small reduction in that, well, not small, but there is a reduction in street sectioning is, and again, that's based on financial, finances, so, you know, you have some of these areas that you can have discretionary spending, so you have to look at that. You know, you're, it's good and bad because you get behind, right? Then you gotta catch back up, so that's...
What's the three thousand per sidewalk replacement?
You read my mind.
That's like four squares, so.
Great. I don't know why Jeff put that place
Not much, but part of our Act Fifty-One is we have to spend so much on sidewalks and other repairs and we have not been spending that. So, we're going to be deficient if we don't start spending some of it on that.
Okay.
It shouldn't be, probably.
Get home, yeah.
Down here, I don't see any major changes at all. It's off a flat, all the way down.
Jeff, I got one.
Yes, sir.
For you to SoHoyle. SoHoyle, you know me and seal coating. Are, are streets passed seal coating now, the, uh, the age of them? I know you had told me they're between ten and fifteen years for asphalt and if you but if you seal coat it, there's a chance it'll last longer, they crack seal, and we've done that and we're able to stretch all that.
Right.
Are we past that now with that seal?
We are some streets are, they're way beyond that. Technically, we're supposed to seal coat them every five years. But when they started deteriorating, you have the alligator in all of these cracks, seal coating is not worth it anymore, so they, they become pretty much subject to displacement or sectioning. For example, if you look at Civic Park Drive now around here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you seal coat that, it won't improve it that much.
My other question is, at one time it was cost-effective and then it became not cost-effective. To pick up the blacktop, mix it with whatever and put it back down.
So, it's rising and lighting the place.
Yeah, we had discussed that previously. Uh, is that still an option we can look at or is it just
It's an option, but the prices are way up there. I just received bids today in another community and the prices came in about twenty-five percent higher than the estimated cost. And that's against labor costs and material costs. Price of oil is way up there and, uh, may as well remove and replace at that point when you start paying that much money.
Well, I, I know that, uh, the DPW told me that, that Civic Park Drive has drainage issues and all this other garbage is the reason if we decided to redo, it would be a massive cost.
That's right.
Because the drainage where the water is, and I, I guess, Jeff, that hasn't changed at all.
Plus the curbs, if you look at the curbs around the asphalt, they're all separately poured and they all do this, so.
So, are, are we still, when we get into that, because Civic Park is almost shot, pretty close. Are we gonna be looking to incorporating that cost of fixing the drainage and, and putting in concrete, or are we gonna blacktop and put curbs back in? Is that the cheaper thing to do?
Historically, the way Civic Park Drive was done, they saw cut the complete pavement, zapped the curbs in place. Removed the concrete, captured the asphalt, went over the curbs, curbs started tending and that's what caused these cracks in the asphalt. I agree with you and it's, when it gets redone, you have to, uh, remove the curbs, replace with curving cutter, with drainage, subdrains and the like, or make sure that, uh, the waste drains sort of don't have the season thaw. Then you can pave either asphalt or most likely asphalt at this point.
Okay.
Cost wise.
It's getting closer, isn't it, SoHoyle? Like, the cost of, asphalt is getting close to the cost of concrete, isn't it?
That's a beautiful.
No, okay.
Asphalt's gone up, so is concrete. It's, it's, the demand of concrete is huge. Contracts out there, they're absorbing all the cement out of the market and concrete price there should be lower, so.
Okay. Yeah, well, it's like a bomb project to me. I know, that's what you're on, yeah. Yeah, I heard it's a couple of times.
So, before you move Jeff?
Yes.
Before you move to the local streets?
Yes.
Um, this operating transfer for the locals at the very bottom of page ninety-three, um, just worth noting in case somebody asks when we get to the, the local ones, is that on the page before that, ninety-one, at the proposed budget, we always budget this one to zero, so whatever we need to put in that for a transfer to make it to zero is what goes over to the local streets, because the local streets normally need more help than the major streets.
Actually, you have an asset management plan in place which implies you to, uh, transfer more than fifty percent from major to local.
And that's also based on the phaser?
Based on the phaser and based on the asset.
Study of the roads, the phaser study, survey. That was just done, right?
It was just done. And the asset management plan will be completed shortly, shortly.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Now, the local streets, ninety-four and ninety-five. As you'll see, that's what Heather's mentioned there, that, the bottom of that column at the top of the page, the last number is a four oh seven, one sixty-six. State Revenue Act Fifty-One funds of four oh three. And property tax levy, local roads, two seventy. So, are, those are the major three components that make up the total revenues of one million, one twenty-nine four fifty. Okay? So, that's the revenue side. Next page is the expense side. How are you spending that money? So, street sectioning, no, let's go to the first big one, joint. Joint cracking ceiling, that's up a little bit. Street sectioning, that's budgeted down a little bit. And then, of course, compliance number, so that's about, in the roads and street maintenance is eight oh six, eight hundred and six thousand. And then you've got a pretty flat rest of the way as far as salt, equipment rental.
So, going back to the joint crack sealing, what councilman worked inside, are, are side streets, these are side streets, correct? These are in better condition than the others?
Most of them.
Most of them. Okay. And the sti- the, the numbers still stay, stay the same fi- five years?
It, it depends on the weather, I think.
Joint sealing is a preventative maintenance that needs to take place to close these gaps. If you don't do that, you'll end up with water getting into the base and the season thaw cycle conducted in the park. This year, um, we had Alan Park run with a bid to save money. What we do is, because some what we do is do something called corporate bidding process, where these committees get together and one runs with the bidding process, pay for all the engineering upfront. Maybe we use piggybacking on that, so you don't have to.
Didn't we do that with like manhole covers or something?
Yeah, as part of DCC, Jeff goes through that quite a bit with So, we kind of take turns. One year you ran with it and everybody ended up piggybacking on the contract. This year it was Alan Park's turn, so. The reason is cost and going up. The more you spend on preventative maintenance, the longer you extend your life, especially for the roads that are not in a deteriorated condition, so you need to extend the life. And it's a good, it's the money what's spent when you do that. Jeff came up with the idea to put this white banding on some of the, that, uh, cracks that we have out there. That was very successful last year and the year before. We're doing it again, so.
What is that usually?
It's called, um, banding, where they, instead of filling with molten asphalt, they do some mix that gets applied sixteen inches wide, drive down Longestorf and see it.
Okay.
So, it, it kind of keeps the joints closed up, because that's where the failures start in the joint and probably gain outward because of ASR. This mix that we're putting in now kind of keeps it together much longer.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other questions with streets? Right, we'll move on to garbage and rubbish. So, on page ninety-eight, at the top is our revenue section. In there you'll see seven sixty-one, seven twenty. That's the one point seven mils that show up on the tax bills on page ninety-eight at the top. So, if you take the amount per mil, multiply it by one point seven four, that's the total. Okay? And basically, that's majority of that revenue. If you go down below on page ninety-nine, you'll see the rubbish contract, which is the hauling of stevens. You'll see some dumpster rentals. You'll see the yard waste program at ninety-one thousand. If you'll go down, you'll see recycling compost, twenty-eight thousand. And then that gives you the four forty-eight and then the transfer to the landfill of the one forty, Heather, right?
Yep.
And that is?
That is the residential dumping.
Yep.
And then the dumping for the DPW.
Yep.
When they do stuff and then also for the special pickups that they dump.
Correct, so that's the two oh five. That's how it's broken down. So, we can charge that because the landfill's paying expenses on behalf of that. So, if you go back to page, so it's just a guess, if you go back to page thirty-four on the rubbish fund, you'll see that that's the total of the expense and the transfer outs. It nets six, you know, we've got six seventy-nine in revenue. And then you'll see the six fifty-three in expense, which means there's about twenty-six thousand, but we don't know what special pickups are gonna be. And so, we'll charge them to actual. The idea is to budget to zero, of course, but we can't charge only for the amount of expense. You don't know what the tons that people are gonna put out. You can eat that twenty-five thousand up or twenty-six thousand up pretty quickly, so.
So, on page ninety-nine, all of the other lines that are zero. So on page ninety-nine, all of the other lines that are zero, now that it's two oh five, is that why, what you just explained?
Correct.
We were not doing it in previous years, this is the first year.
This is the first year?
Yes.
Because of the one point seven four?
Yes.
And we will track that. The containers for recycling that the landfill pays is to take out.
Well, we're going with the service, right?
Correct.
Stevens is going to take care of.
Take it to Great Lakes Recycling, we'll get a bill from them on that, that bill is the.
I, I thought it was gonna be a subscription.
Oh, no, we're not, we're, this is not recyc- this is the dumpster.
Dumpster, okay.
The, the three big dumpsters we have for paper.
Yep.
For cardboard, paper.
At the landfill.
At the landfill.
Gotcha.
You got it.
Throw the numbers there.
Okay. All right. Anything else in the rubbish fund other than that? All right. Now we'll move, we've done the draw the forfeiture, now we'll go to the enterprise fund, which is the big one, the water and sewer. Uh, page one thirty-one. So let's go really, really quick back, just so that you can take a quick look. Let me go back to that page, I love that summary. I learned a lot about that summary. We go on page thirty-six, the water and sewer fund is on page, it's five ninety-two column, it's the third column from the left. You'll see that's the total revenue into the fund of five point six million. And you'll see the total expenditures of the fund, six point four, which leaves us a negative seven eighty-two. So that's saying we're gonna do the work in excess of the revenue we bring in. So the fund balance is gonna help that fund to the tune of seven eighty-two. Which is all the water sewer, um, the water, new water lines, the new sewer lining, the new water infrastructure. And when we raise, you know, GWLA raised our water price to the city at four point three, we just rounded it up to five percent. To get rid of that number, Heather, what was that number that we calculated to get rid of that seven eighty-two?
Almost, it's like twenty-one percent.
Of course, we can't do that, so. Now this all depends on infrastructure, right? What you're gonna do, so. It was failing, the infrastru- the infrastructure was failing, so we have to do those sewer linings, we have to do the water lines. So at one time, um, a long time ago, uh, there was, we looked at the history of the, the water rates and there was years of twenty-one percent, twenty-two percent. And the idea was they were gonna not bond for that. That's another way of putting the city, putting bonds on the books and do the work, so. I know, I think, uh, Councilman Trump Lee used to scream and yell about increases about that, but.
About three months in a row.
Yeah, so.
In Elmo.
Yeah, so I had to at least pass through GWLA. And you know, I shared all of this with you before I made the call at what percent, so. That's a number we're gonna have to pay attention to going in the future. And we're gonna have to make decisions going forward on what infrastructure, because Jeff in Sohail has it all scheduled out. And it's like, hey man, these things are failing and we're gonna have to address them, so. I think though, we're addressing a lot of them.
We are.
There's more to go, there's always more.
We are, this, uh, the critical part is we have a capital improvement plan for both water and sanitary and we're way behind catching up with that. And the farther we fall behind, the more it's gonna cost the future to catch up.
Yeah, 'cause those expenses don't go down, it's price, price per foot and the price per.
Well, especially in the sewer. Unless we pay attention to the sewers, the more infiltration flow we have, the more we're paying duwa for excess flows. They're technically treating water that we're paying for unnecessarily. And we need to tighten the sewers and what the city zone is good now, we just allocated one point eight million dollars in sewer lining, which is great, and that's gonna put a dent in the excess flows. But again, if you look at the overall system, we're a bit behind actually.
And again, for me, it was a learning process as well, because I've never done this, but, but when I got into the math and the, the schedules, I went, oh boy. And that's why I reached out to everyone to make sure they all knew. So anyhow, I know what you did in your time and I don't know if, uh, I was ready to try to pitch that right now, but, um.
Well, my concern is, Sohail, we talked a long time ago about treatment.
Yep.
And you told me that's gonna cost. And we're animal.
No.
Is the federal government or the states gonna order us to do it eventually?
Eventually they want us to improve the system to make it reliable. Because again, we are committed to make the system reliable. We need fire hydrants at work, that supply enough water when the fire department runs to them. And, uh, but at that end, you don't have that.
Is, I have a question.
Yeah?
Councilman Workman, is that what you were talking about over on Pennsylvania, the big mains and that, a couple of years ago, you know, something different? Okay. Cause you were, I remember you calling that out and then over on Pennsylvania, correct?
So, Hal, in that plan, that capital improvement plan, what's the total, like what, like what?
We have a five-year plan, we have a twenty-year plan. I think the five years around three point five, the twenty years about six point eight, seven point nine. That's for water only. The sanitary is much more aggressive in there and it's got huge numbers. We still have the connection from the hundred and subdivision to the tunnel to consider. That's gonna be about four, four and a half billion dollars by itself. Not considering other replacements, other improvements in the system. And that was derived from the asset management plan that we did part of the SOG land in two thousand seventeen. We had a schedule that, that indicated every improvement in what year and what the rate of fee should be to handle that. We're nowhere near that.
So we will have more discussions in the future, of course, about that and we're gonna have to. And, and, and yet, you know, uh, there's some fund balance, but you know, you don't wanna start digging into that either, you know, you want to. And we're digging into it already. The idea is you don't wanna deplete that at a high rate.
And, and with the waters, the money that was taken out is already put back, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was a financial statement entry, it wasn't an actual.
Financial. Say that one more time.
It was a financial statement entry, not a general ledger.
Correct.
It had to come from that somewhere, so.
Right.
It came from there, so it's bad.
It's all split, correct.
Correct. But every year we will, we will, we will, um, going forward, write a note if that hasn't happened with interest. Even if it's for whatever dates.
An interest paid ourselves maybe.
Correct.
Because it's being.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. Heather, did I explain that clearly? Okay.
Correct.
All right, so that's, you know, the, if, if you look, the charges for services is at five point six million. It comes from water operations and it comes from sewer operations, so that's.
Water and sewer.
Yep, okay. And then, and then over here is the debt service, we're still paying Wayne County on some bonds uh, to the tune of three fifty-four, it's budgeted. Heather, some of these things are gonna fall off, right? I mean, I don't know, yeah. I know some of them's new, like the duo with the line. Yep, the duos are new. But the other ones are not.
And because this is Wayne County, it's something I thought of last night, because you know how you always think of that one thing before you fall asleep. When it goes to the landfill, Wayne County gets a portion, right? By law do we have to give that to them?
Oh, the tipping fees are.
Yes.
Yeah. No, we're, we're fighting, we're fighting.
We're asking for it back.
Yeah, we're working on that.
They said they would help us.
They'd help us financially, so.
And have they helped us yet?
That's helping air quotes.
Right. Okay. But that's something that we're working on and that could have helped.
Yes.
Us at the landfill.
Correct.
We're talking about one point two million?
No, it's a little bit less than that, it's like, yeah, nine hundred, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's based on tons, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, our tons are down.
Yeah, so.
Right. So if, if, if we could go that route, that would even.
Yeah, we already sent a letter, so now it was signed by the mayor and now we gotta work the commissioners and we gotta work.
Good day, it's a phone.
Yeah. We gotta get up there.
They didn't know they had those.
Yeah, but they don't. Okay, so I'm on to one thirty-five, there's, there really is awful flat, there's not much of an increase at all. We'll get on page one thirty-six, pump repair. We've got a number in there because you gotta always, um, have a placeholder for that. You don't know when there's gonna go and he doesn't have time, you know. The sewer jet truck, um, we, it's not in this year's budget, because it should be paid by the end of the year, we're hopeful. Jeff, you have any report on that, if it's coming?
I don't believe it'll be here till probably September. It won't be here before July.
Cool. Heather, a little bit forward, that's all. We just assume it was gonna be here by June, I didn't check. The sewer lining, uh, we're in the midst of that project, there's six hundred thousand pushing forward, right? It was one point one for this year.
Right.
Six hundred of that, we push forward. So that's what that's.
That's progressing very well, by the way.
Yeah, good. The Duwa Tunnel, Sohail, the Duwa Tunnel that both you and Jeff budgeted for one oh five, what does that represent? And we put the Duwa Tunnel down there.
That's strictly, um, design fees and associated studies and so on.
Okay. Okay. Do we have an estimate yet from that of what that may cost the city if we make that connection, when you get it through?
Well, it's going up the more, it's four point five million dollars.
Wow. Okay. So that's where the decreases, is the decrease in the water truck and the, um, for total capital outlay. But like I said, that six hundred will move over there. I think that's all I had in that water fund. Is there anything, I mean, it was awful. The water consumption, one, one other thing I wanna say is, you know, Jeff came to me with Sohail and the water consumption, it's a guess, right? You just need to, they ask you for a high point and a low point and that's, we, we, we chose the consumption based on where, you know. So Hal and Jeff looked at it and they came up with a sweet spot, so that's where it's budgeted for the sweet spot. Could be less than that, right? So, but. But we're committed to a certain fee.
Right.
So explain how, how, cause you know, the, the rumor is that we negotiate with GWLA. So, I mean, it's, there's a myriad of things that go into calculating in the high and low rate, so help me out, how is that all there?
They, uh, they run a six-year average and they look at our consumption and they have the max day peak out flows. And based on that, they say you have, you already got to a point historically where you could reach this point, so you cannot go below it too much. They go above it ten percent, but not below it, because if we pick a rate that's below that level and we exceed it, we're gonna pay penalties. So they're preventing us from making a mistake, being always at us, oh, we're not gonna use that much water. Let's go to this point, then all of a sudden we're exceeding, then they come back saying, hey, you told us to design our system in, uh, GWA to supply you this much, but now you're using much more, therefore we're gonna surcharge you for that. To avoid that, they set this rate, that you can go up to this point, but not below it. Because you're gonna have to design our pumping in our system maintenance, not that, to give you that much. At the same time, we cannot, we don't wanna go too much above the peaking, because again, with peaking, there's a price to pay. It's a surcharge that they have to, okay, if I go to a peak, we're gonna pump so much to get to that peak, so we're gonna charge so much more money. We don't wanna go above that.
Well, I, I think in the past, at, at some point we looked at, if we had a wa- water tower, then you, you fill that during the low rate time.
That's correct. That was for what we call minimizing the peaking effect. Based on water demand in the summer when people are all watering. Usually we like to have a water, you know, six AM, like before, like maybe four to five. And, um, after, everybody's getting up and showering, so they don't cause this peak, because the peak is costing lots of money. The water power's purpose was, you fill it up at night when there's no peak demand. And you use it when there's a peak demand, instead of going to GWA, using their water to supply the peaking background, use the water tower to do it. But again, there's a cost to the tower.
Yeah.
And there's a cost to operating it and there's a cost, uh, to, uh, fill it, because sometimes the pressures that this supplies do not fill up. So yeah, the boost of pumps.
Oh, okay. Isn't that cheap, is it? You know, for install a water tower and?
It used to be fifty, fifty cents per gallon, it's up to seven dollars per gallon now, so. A million gallon will cost seven million dollars to build.
Remember we were gonna park.
Truck, truck.
Trucking and the.
We backed out on. And they had all kinds of issues. So these, these small communities that have these water towers, way back from when, they're ahead of the game then, aren't they?
They're better maintainable.
Yeah, yeah, but they're ahead of the game.
Yep.
Thank you, Sohail. Okay. And then down at the end of the page of the capital outlay, you'll see the water main replacement at one point three million in this year's budget, so.
I, I don't wanna jump ahead, waters, meters, are they on this page?
Jeff, do we budget for the water meters, the, the in, the in-house, how you wanna make those remote?
Yes.
Yes.
Where?
That's the under, I'm not sure.
Radio meter reading? That's a hundred and ten thousand?
I believe that's what it was.
Yep, it's a hu- radio meter reading, hundred and ten thousand.
That's what I have highlighted, so that's, that's the new style.
Correct.
So that's not for new water meters? That's for, uh, basically a collector called a gateway, that'll go up on, uh, two towers, two different towers. That will pick up the readings from the water meter.
So you won't have to drive around, correct?
Right, they'll basically put them in the cloud so we can
All right.
Pull up a water meter reading anytime you want.
Are, are we eventually gonna go to the water meter that has the app where the resident can actually see?
We are due right now to replace water meters, I mean, their average lifespan's twenty years.
Right.
And it has been, I think, just about twenty years since the businesses were replaced. But, um, there is, the new water meters do have the capability of that, but it's extremely expensive and most places have found that a very small percentage of the population actually uses it. So for the cost that it would cost the city, most people say it's not really advantageous to go that route, but you could.
We'll have to look at it.
I'm just, go ahead.
Jeff, now, water meters, when they hit their age, they fail to the advantage of the user.
Yeah, right, the leader just stopped working.
So we lose money. And, and if I recall.
Doesn't work out in their favor.
If I recall, when we replaced those meters, we pretty much paid for them, because we were so far behind. The, the, the money we were getting back paid for what we did.
Right, plus there's a, a, a meter charge on the water bills, which is technically.
Should be funding it.
Should be funding the twenty-year replacement money.
So, I mean, it seems like water billing is always a hot topic. So with the, the meter that we were talking about, where you can have an app, you're saying people don't use that enough for it to be cost effective?
So one of the meters will always have that capability, it's whether you buy the software for it or not. And the other communities I've talked to and the reps that I've talked to say that for the money that it costs versus the small percentage of people that actually use it.
That's shocking, but I, I believe you, it's just shocking, because DTE has the little white box, you know, that you can see when your AC kicks on and stuff. I would think as much of a hot topic as it is in our city, that everybody would do. I'm gonna use you as an example, if you're going up north, it would be very easy to go to the app and be like, water's running, I'm at home. I'd probably do it. I'd probably do it too.
It's very nice to have.
Okay, I will admit, I do have that, I've been testing it.
Yeah, right.
And I'll, I'll say the first thing you notice is, just like anything else, once you, once you pay attention to how much you're using, you'll use less.
Which would be beneficial for.
So, but the, what becomes an issue and you can set up all kinds of notifications is, um, when I'm watering the lawn, I'll get an email saying you're using in excess of flow rate or, you know, you use more than whatever limit you set up. So it's, um.
And how do you like it personally?
I, I like it. I, well, I don't pay attention, a whole lot of attention to it now, but once I first started using it, then yes, it's a, it's an educational tool. And the big thing is, you know, how you, you have to check for leaks, well, you really don't have to do anything, you just, you know, plug it where the meter was before you go to bed, you know, get up.
Before you go to bed, you know, get up eight hours later and see if it, see if it's changed.
Right.
So, but it's, it's real good for monitoring how much you actually use and when.
I would totally use that. I'd ignore it after I saw the numbers, but I would use it.
Oh.
Totally look at it, if that's all you, just.
It's been a while since I logged in.
After I load the laundry, I'm like.
Okay.
I did, I just didn't know.
Yes.
How, how much more expensive it was than, especially after listening to Councilman Gorkman say when they go bad, it's not a benefit.
Not for us.
They're designed to fail that way.
So, we need to be prepared, that's, that's.
That's why I brought it up.
So.
That would've come in perfect for what happened to SoHo and several other people over this past winter, so, you wanna tell them what happened in the building?
But, we had the water main break inside the building when the temperature went down to zero. Started Christmas Eve, the police department called me on the twenty-six, two days later. Bill is four thousand seven hundred sixty dollars for water.
Wow.
Wow. I mean, had I had that meter, I would've been notified that something's going on, and, um, now we still have about hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of repairs to the building. Besides the water consumption, but we would've detected it early enough to respond to it and shut it down.
We've had two other, two other residents that I can think of, well, I think one bill was seven thousand, the other one was five thousand, for basically the same scenario. And we don't know, I mean, we only read every three months.
Right.
That's when we find it, and try to notify them. But, I mean, in these, in this case, people are in Florida.
Is that my neighbor? Is that something I've heard of, like the horror stories of, once somebody moves, and then they get this, like, old bill that's crazy high? Is that, is that what we're talking about, or am I on something else?
No, like the basement floods, or something happens.
All right, all right.
Yeah, they're in Florida, and they own the home.
Okay.
And, yeah, their pipe froze and broke inside the house because the heat wasn't on, and filled up their basement with water, that's about dollars.
Constantly running, right?
Throw the chlorine in there. Don't be cold.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
So, now we go over to the Capital Projects Fund, one fifteen. Um, actually, on page one seventeen, that's kind of the revenues of that, two eighty-four, as you can see, that's substantially down. The land reserve transfers down to one thirty. Where you can see the different numbers are pretty darn flat, so it's two eighty-four. You go on to the next page, one eighteen, you can see where the, the monies are being spent, there's debt payments, two thirty-nine eight forty-two. You can see the bolt ramp rehabilitation project, which is basically the joint ceiling crack filling. Striping is really a big, I, I mentioned this last night, that the striping's really bad, so they don't know if we'll spend all of that, but I think we should stripe it. But, uh, and then, everything down below the line in IT equipment, that's really all the contractual basis things that, from year to year, he's gotta have. So, that's kind of what that means, those are the software agreements, maintenance agreements and such, so, there was nothing in there that really came out shocking, or all up a little bit. He also provided, you know, forty-nine hundred for some new equipment, so. So, those kind of have to be there. All right? And then on the appendices, I mean, we, we're not gonna go through all those lines, but the one I really wanted to go through, they're just a kind of show, it's on page one sixty-one. And it's the five-year capital replacement program. You'll see on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, there's nothing in there. The columns are, I mean, you push it out over twenty-eight, twenty-nine, but, you know, we push everything to the right, and we kind of did that so that, and again. We understand, Jeff says it, you know, if the heating and cooling goes at City Hall, that's a pretty big expense. But, we're hopeful that we can keep it together for one more year, I know, and the, the hopes are with the revenues from different sources. You know, the landfill doesn't, you know, need extra, and, you know, that, that's the kind of idea that RNG royalties coming in, that's some different revenues, and. I know the other thing that council's gonna consider with the public safety issue coming up. Those two, in their five-year plan, that plant ran laid out for us, is critical to start working off these columns. And that's kind of what we were gonna plan to do with some of those revenues. The sale of the cell tower, the sale of the vacant, you know, the land parcels that we're selling.
Where are we on that land parcel?
Um, Dave's gone, I just went to, and ordinance is gonna come before you for the zoning, so that we can offer it many ways zoned, so it's more, um, attractive to bidders. And when we get that done, then, I'm told that, um, I'll bring the parcels to you officially in a council, so that we can authorize a bid for those.
This is the section off Sibley across from Ferndale Cemetery, that makes one.
And the nine acres on Branche.
So.
Which are right across from Holmeister Street, right across there, there'll be a cutout. So, those two will come as first as an ordinance, second as an authorization to bid it. We're not, you're not authorizing us, the administration is sell it, but you're authorizing us to bid it.
So, is it gonna be mul- multiple, multiple zoning?
Uh, Dave's gone, I have to get that, because it was a way that we can, who, people who come in can kind of pitch their idea to the development, and also the cost, their bid. And to make sure it fits the leadership's intentions of what you want. And it gives them more flexibility, because if you zone it all residential, then you're stuck that way.
People wanna have their condos above and trucks below, so they want them next to you.
Correct, and that takes a special kind of zone, and there's a way you can do that, so you can accomplish potentially restaurant, bar, condos. It was funny, though, I got, I do have to tell you this, because Dave showed me the first drawing, and he had the condos as just an idea, the condos, and it was going down one fairway, the other golf course. That won't work, he goes, well, you know, I think we can stretch it, I said, no, that won't work, those condos have to be.
Crash.
Yeah, right, so.
I've heard that hanging noise a few times.
Yeah, so. So, anyhow, so that should be coming to studies, the ordinance should be coming in May, and I hope the bid would be coming, the authorization to go to bid, after the ordinance is done in early June. And we are really close to our agreement with A T and T, so as soon as the A T and T agreement is inked, then the cell tower bid will be going. I'll get authorization from you to bid the cell tower out.
So, it's key we have that agreement first, so that increases the value.
Yeah, and, and their payment went up substantially, and so that means the value of the tower went up substantially.
Remember, we, they, they wanted, like, cut it, so.
So, we negotiated it up, so we're just, we're just gone through some insurance, and so as soon as that is clarified, we'll be bringing that forward. I don't know if the agreement comes forward, because it's, you approved the agreement, as long as, yeah.
I have a question, Mr. Maron. With this budget, we're balanced.
Yeah, that was that page.
Right.
Was that page I showed.
So, my question, I guess, to you guys, is if we have a balanced budget, do we still wanna do the public safety mileage?
And my answer is yes, because they showed you that even though you're budgeted now, all these other sales of assets help with all this capital improvement plan, and all the other things in the city. And then, the, we still have to fund that landfill, closure, post-closure, escrow, the whole bit that we haven't been funding, and that's the relief.
But I, we, I have part of it coming from, um, I'll say the, uh.
The RNG fees?
No, the, our, our fund balance, right, is, we're using part of that, or are we?
Right, for what?
For it to make the balance of what they're paying us.
Not this year, but you will going forward. Now, that's not illegal, there's a lot of communities that can't balance their budget, and they have to use fund balance, so that's not against the law, but you gotta get approval from the state. But the public safety village is to take the pressure off the city depending on that landfill.
Right.
Because we still got closure, post-closure fees, we still have, uh, funding of, uh, escrow projects.
But we have the, the es- the capital escrow account.
We do, but that's gonna keep growing, that factor grows, that's why you got a, a letter of credit, because we don't have all of that, those funds. Right, so we're, we're backed by those funds with that letter of credit.
With P N C.
Correct, we're almost two there, we're working with them. So, you gotta understand that the idea of, you know, the landfill giving three million or three point five million is gone, those days are gone. That's why we're making up that difference.
And this budget has the transfer, a transfer, much lower than it has been in past years from the landfill to the general fund, but we're trying to do that without that. So, future years, we can't depend on the landfill to give us anything.
We have to get used to not having.
Yeah, wean ourselves away.
Without that transfer.
But, and your point, you already said it is, we have to start now to start weaning ourselves, so it's not like flip a switch.
Well, let, let me give you an example, right, just dirt, right, we lucked out a long time ago when they did that practice facility in the driving range, they got all free dirt from Metro Airport when they expanded the airport. Oh, that was your time, you got all that free dirt, we had to pay for that dirt, like, because we're gonna have to do a final cap, there could be, I'm, I'm, like, ten million dollars of dirt costs that we need just to cap that landfill? And where are you gonna get that dirt? That's ten million dollars of clean dirt. We've got a big borrow pit, we can borrow pit a little bit more, but not all of it, so there's costs, and that's what we're doing right now. I'm working with Kevin and Jennifer at Tetra Tech, because I wanna see exactly, we know we're putting in what the state tells us to put in, it's the real cost, the closed alley landfill. What is the real cost? What's dirt, what's layers of, of the material? Yeah, you know.
Thank you.
What is the real cost?
Okay.
And so, I don't want some of the state, oh, Jeff, you never told us about these real costs.
But, but when we're talking about the, I don't know the proper term, I'm gonna use Councilwoman Gannagas, across from Ferndale Cemetery.
Yes.
Why, why don't we also look at the half a million dollars that we bought west of the landfill going out towards Allen Road?
Yeah, there, and SoHo just left, just let you, let you know, if we were gonna even move that access road there, there is some serious sewer and utility problems, like to the tune of two million dollars. Now, a developer might do that, right, to, to develop it, but there's some, there's some.
Challenges.
Challenges, there's some building challenges.
And I, I'm not saying for the city to do it, but why not put it for sale, say, oh, and sell it, we're not gonna.
So, let me, let me just tell you something, right, and I think Dean will answer and be truthful with us, Dean, saying we can't, we could potentially extend the landfill in that direction. That's, you know how we wanted to go to the golf course, we own that property, we could potentially go that, that way. Wasn't that an idea too? Much more expensive, but it increases the methane gas royalties to any kind of, you know, extension that way, so. That's what was told to me early on when I started, said, hey, Jeff, let's leave that land alone for a while, until we decide.
Even though we're in a deficit, the tonnage price is way down, we don't see that coming up.
Yeah, well, here's the thing, the royalty, right? You got that curve, if we expand it even a couple of years, that curve keeps going up like that, and you keep collecting that.
And we have a lot of wetlands there too, right?
There are some in the back corner.
Yeah.
You know, we have to mitigate them, they call it mitigating, find some other place. So, all of that's on the table, I'm not saying no to any of what you're saying, I, I'm open to it.
I'm just thinking out loud.
But I'm telling you that the cost, you know, they were using an inflation factor, that inflation factor increased by three million dollars, and that's exactly why we had to get the letter of credit. Now, once it's an inflation factor goes five times next time, then we gotta get more letter of credit and pay more interest, and we gotta get wean ourselves so the landfill can take care of all of its needs with the operation and tonnage. That has to be.
When was the last year that we made a, a deposit of around three million? Was it two thousand and twenty-two?
No.
Twenty-one?
We did two six.
Did you do the escrow accounts, or are you talking?
No, transferred to the general fund.
It was two point nine was the last, it was less than three five, it was two nine, that's the one I remember, when I first started.
Yeah, but we've been not taking the full transfer, when we get to the fourth quarter, whatever we need to balance the general fund, we're gonna move in the rest back.
Two nine, two six, two nine, that's the one I remember.
Because you came on board in the middle of nineteen.
July of nineteen, July of nineteen, right.
So, twenty-one, twenty-two, we still budgeted the two point six, and we only used one point three two oh.
Take care of it.
We've been trying to, yeah, push stuff back, because the landfill has been having issues, and we're not trying to give back whatever we can, we're just trying to balance the general fund.
You know, Plant said it well, they showed the schedule, you all have the schedule, send it back out, and, you know, they've recognized that we've got to wean ourselves from that landfill. Meaning the general fund, and that's, that was a best solution. I mean, the headley rolled back, but what happens when you do that, it catches back up, and you're.
Yeah, that's.
So, being, would it be safe to say, being in the trash business isn't as lucrative as it used to be?
Oh, correct, correct, and we talked about that, we talked about that revenue, in the days, it was this.
Right.
Now, it's this.
And by saying that, once again, thinking out loud with colleagues, do we really wanna go west?
I don't, I'm going for the gas.
That'll be a discussion for another.
For the gas, right, but the other thing is price board. Which isn't gonna go away.
It might.
I don't know.
Because you know what?
They're trying to run each other out of business.
That's what they're trying to do, G F L and Waste Management and the public, they're on a war right now.
And we'd have to look at, if, if there is an expansion that way, you gotta run through all the numbers.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Obviously, it's gotta have some type of quality return even considered.
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, be, excellent point, because what did we spend from seventeen till the now, I, I tried to get it, you know? It's like, if this is a big poker table, I don't, I don't wanna throw my chips in it on that one.
Yeah, well, again, that's why we had to put it up, it's because of the access road and the, uh, challenges of getting someone to take that with the sewer problem.
Impossible development.
Impossible development.
I just.
We could develop it.
Yeah.
I think once the landfill closes, I mean, there, there'd be some, there could be subdivision back there, there's other things that could be able to.
Would it be so wet?
Well, there's only one corner, there's only one corner, so, so if this is the lot, so if, if you're looking at, this is the lot right here, it's only this corner of that lot, King and, um, Allen. It's that lot, that, like, behind the Oakwood.
That's for sale right now.
Yeah, but behind there is where our zone, our wetland.
Yeah, how we developed, closing it so wet.
And we access, we, we, uh, what do they call it?
Annex.
And it's, we annexed it, it's Riverview.
But not.
We annexed that property, that property is now Riverview.
I think there's one strip on the road of Allen that's still Brownstown.
We own it, and it's now, we used to own it in Brownstown.
Now it's part of.
Now it is part of Riverview.
Right.
So, if you built a subdivision.
It's Riverview town.
It's Riverview town.
Right, but that, the property that's for sale at the corner where the old Beaumont used to be, that's, they tore down, that's still Brownstown.
It is, and I believe a strip of our land, if this is our lot off Allen, I think a strip of it's still Brownstown.
Okay.
I think a strip of it is.
Probably that stuff that's for sale up towards the front.
But, but everything in the back is, and I don't know if that's easement, or if that's something, but.
Something along those lines, where they tried to stop us before, they had to get their approval, they wanted to do something.
Yep, so there's a part, there's a strip there, hence why they fought the access road.
Yeah, they'd be more amenable to housing, things like that.
Or development, yeah, sure, because they would still get that amount.
But moved, but as Dean said, it is Riverview ultimately.
Yep, yep. Over that strip.
Do you remember, I don't know if you do or not, Dean, there was a time that, uh, when we finally closed off Grange Road. You couldn't go from Sibley to Gr- or right through to Grange anymore, there was a time where there was a bit of a pond, and they were going to build, what? Five or six homes, excluding Sibley.
Around Lake.
That's the borrow pit, right?
Yeah, it's the borrow pit.
Is there fishing?
Well, I haven't fished it, so I can't tell you, but I can tell you what, there's no fish in the Riverview Highlands Gold Nine Pond there, on three and four. Fished that one time, and there's nothing in there, because sometimes the biggest fish you catch are on golf course, I can tell you, the biggest bass I ever caught in my life is on hole number eight at Lakes of Taylor's.
My dad worked for Edward Levy, and he used to tell me all the time that, even when they would dig a hole, the water would fill up, there'd be fishing.
Yeah, and that's from the birds.
Yep.
Are we, are we not going to any of the other?
No, we can, but I mean, there's nothing, I mean, these schedules are pretty normal, you know, I mean, there's nothing, I don't wanna waste your time when you can go get that on your own.
All right, uh, any other final questions coming for Jeff?
Hey, Jeff?
Yeah.
So, can you tell me, we've gone over this before, I know in the past, I, I never. So, can you tell me, we've gone over this before, I know in the past, I, I never quite understood why. Were there, even maybe before, you, there was times that payroll was paid out of the capital improvement escrow. Why did we do that? I'm still having like a love, but we've talked about it and I just, I don't understand.
I don't think that's true, but.
Okay, I'm, I'm going through notes and I'm trying to.
I don't believe that's true.
Okay.
I don't have knowledge of that. But Heather would be the one, because she, you know, Heather's books.
We have salary accounts that even exist.
So, so, just so you know, Heather is kind of the books and the balances, like the bank statements and the ledger. She controls that. And again, I'm reviewing her journal entries and posting, because we have to have a segregation to do. We are using some part timers for some of the clerical accounting stuff that can help Heather with, so.
So everything that goes to a bank, it gets a receipt, it comes to you, right?
Yep, yep, she sees it all.
But actually, it all comes to.
She sees it all.
Just one comment back to, um, the attorney and the attorney's fees from the other day. We see the huge amounts and what's being charged to the city. Is there a way to determine how much money the attorneys or the firm has actually saved us? Uh, lawsuit, land preserve, the, the, what we use them for? Instead of just seeing two million dollars for the attorney fee, firm with their fees. What about the money that they bring in for us or save us? Is there a way of approaching?
I asked for an itemized report yesterday, so they were gonna try and work on like a breakdown of what we pay them, what we.
And, and I did, and then after I shortly kind of took the seat as an interim, I did provide a schedule and with bills and I showed kind of how, you know, it was broken down, but at the end of the day, you know, like where I came from, that attorney was two hundred and ten dollars an hour. Okay, from the past stop. And it all depends, you know, the attorney's bill when you use them, if you make a call to them and talk to them, you're on the clock. And, and, you know, we've used them in, you know, under the direction of prior council and I think this council, they're involved in all the HR matters, all the contract negotiations, all the major disciplines.
We did a few years ago that we, we did that, that maybe part of the negotiations.
And then at the land preserve, I know I used them because they had to look at all the escrow transactions, they had approved. I mean, they do a lot of work for the city and it's based on the number of hours. I mean, if, if you, if, if you get a higher rate and we're gonna ask them to do all this, well, let's increase about forty percent.
I think what we asked for was just like a, a, a counting of like, um.
Categories?
Categories of the types of work.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll try to put that together. I mean, we're in the, we're in the midst, we're not gonna, you know, not do it, but we're gonna get to it. But at the end of the day, you know, I mean, the institutional knowledge that that firm has of working with us, you know, I, I, I've seen in a different city that they went through two or three of them and we lost a lot of things. And we lost a lot of court cases, we lost a lot of, um, claims and so, um, and, and it's weird because in different cities, you have a lot of different firms that might be doing it at different rates. Like an employment attorney could be at four hundred dollars an hour, where court counsel's at two hundred and ten or whatever. We get the one rate. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a huge savings to us.
Okay, but back to, to the, the final part of the question. Is there a way to determine what they save the city? We know what they're charging us, but say we're, we've, we've entered into a lawsuit. Well, all we know, all this body knows is that there was a lawsuit. And unless there's a judgment against us, we don't know what, what the outcome could have been. Do you get where I'm going?
Yeah, that would.
But that would be all speculation.
It would be hard to measure. But I think would be measurable and we'll just say it relates to the landfill. I remember when I first got on the, the landfill committee, they had pages of delinquent accounts. And, and I don't know, was that just something that accumulated over the years, I mean? And then they started involving Randy's, um, not, not only in the development of the contracts, but in collecting the payments. And I think that's down to probably two or three companies now.
Yeah, it's less than a handful for sure. At least when I was there.
So, I mean, there's, there's, you know, there's, you know, I wouldn't want to call it savings, but a good recoup of our money, just, just the way they set up the contracts and do all the background checks and all that, so, I mean, there's, there's enormous amount of work done, but it's, I think the Jeff point is, is the, the large amount of institutional knowledge that they have.
I, I. All the cities have contracts and, and they, I get the knowledge, I get the history, I understand all of that. We're paying a substantially large amount of money compared to, because I did look. And they, all those cities have contracts that get negotiated. It would, all the things that are mentioned, all the other cities have the same things too. So, I'm asking for the itemized because I, I want to understand it. I'm not saying we're getting court service, I'm not saying doesn't, they don't do a great job. The point is, is that it's a large amount of money compared to.
Is the hours.
And.
And we have our own enterprises.
And that is, and that's separate. So, so we're, we're talking five, five hundred and fifty and then three hundred for like, they're not even grouped together, because I said yesterday, let's cut out the landfill attorney fees, that's fine. So let's just put the five fifty for just the city. And again, five fifty, a- and I have it all written down, I mean, Allen Park, who they're, they also represent, pay in two thousand and twenty-one, a hundred and eighty.
You have to include all of them.
I did. I, you can find all of this online. It's all right there. You can type in.
I think you need to look at the different accounts. Some cities charge, they, they list it differently, and that would be something for you to do.
I, I'm not looking like that though. It, it's listed where, under checkbooks, and you can type in Pentsia and exactly what checks were written to them, because Allen Park writes it every single month.
But then you might have to get all their attorneys, because maybe that's only one attorney.
I did.
Allen Park has more than one.
Yeah.
But I also did it for Gibraltar and I did it for, so, I just want, I wanna know. I just wanna know.
Sure. I know. Yeah. And, and, you know, and I know like legal fees in some cities are charged to like, Dean is saying, different departments, like HR or risk management or whatever, and so you gotta go and pick it. But as you said, you ran it by vendor, which is good, but now you gotta make sure, do they have other, do they have Miller, Canfield, do they have?
Rizotti.
Rizotti, you know?
I did, I.
Okay.
I just, I just wanna know.
Okay.
Because it's a question that comes up quite a bit.
Yep.
And I just wanna know.
Well, then we gotta have apples to apples comparison to make sure.
Exactly. And then the questions can stop, right?
It's not just the dollar amounts, it's more the hours that we use them for.
Right? Because I know we use them for HR for every single meeting, but that's a whole.
That's another conversation.
Okay, okay. Not time for public comment. Anybody wanna? Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
First of all, uh, it's been a very informative two evenings. I appreciate the work that Jeff and Heather you put into carrying this, especially not having a finance director available. So I know the long hours that you put into it on behalf of the community. First now, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I do have some questions and I'll try to keep it short. I know some of the department heads are not here. And if you need to defer it, I can always send it an email and wait for response from the email. On page forty-two, um, it had been mentioned by Todd that Summerfest basically break, breaks even. And if I'm understanding correctly, the revenue is about forty-two thousand and then another ten thousand from sponsorships, for a total of fifty-two thousand. Is that our total revenue from Summerfest? Or are there other things that I'm missing?
Well, you got here, you got the corporate donation, Summerfest thirty thousand, Summerfest revenue is forty-two, uh, special events.
Yeah, and there's also like senior taxi program.
Yeah.
For thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty. I'm not quite sure what that is.
So we've got the seventy-two. And I believe, I'm not sure if the ten, if part of the tens in there too, but I know the seventy-two is guaranteed Summerfest revenue.
So we would say roughly seventy-two thousand?
Yeah, and what is the expense side? But did you see in? Where does that, um?
Page eighty, so Summerfest is fifty-five. Well, that's what we put for this time.
Yep.
So is that fifty-five for supplies?
There'll be supplies and vendors.
Okay.
And then it wouldn't be like allocating our, our time people that spend the time, but.
But we have an accounting of that, because I said it was real important for us to track, so they did do an accounting of that.
Leave there with this, I'm trying to find, I didn't document another fifty-five thousand dollars for.
That's special events. That would not be part of Summerfest.
Says, uh.
Special event supplies.
Yeah, it was forty-eight, now it's fifty-five.
Mm-hmm. There's used golf carts in there. That's the line item that the used golf carts are in.
It's also where the tree lighting.
Tree lighting and all that, yep. And that's purely recreation.
There was another fifty-five thousand.
Senior transportation, another.
Where?
Just in the, in the, there's a line in for senior transportation that's fifty-five.
Yeah, so then there's just a, a line item, Summerfest, fifty-five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, what is that?
That's all the fees, the tent rentals, the, the, any kind of banners printed. That's, that's all of the fees for Summerfest.
Okay, and then the funds that we were just talking about, the other fifty-five thousand dollars?
Special events.
Special events.
Yes.
Which may or may not be part of Summerfest.
It is not, it is not.
Well, that would be the Easter.
Easter, all, all of those other things.
Okay, so essentially we're spending fifty-five thousand.
Correct.
Expenses.
Correct.
And so we're bringing in around roughly seventy-seven thousand, seventy-two thousand. So we're actually making money off of it.
We.
Okay, for the year.
I don't know.
It's a great event, so I'm not knocking, I'm just trying to understand.
I don't know if that, that delta is as big as twenty-two thousand, but I've seen it better than five.
Okay.
Because you know, these are budgets, right? This is the sponsors we're gonna get, this is the revenue, this is the estimated expense, that's what a budget is.
Todd had mentioned there was somebody going after sponsorships, I missed the name, and what, did she work for the?
Yeah, it, yeah, it's called Production Three Sixty.
Uh-huh.
Um, she was a contact that I knew of in my past career.
Thought we know Julie Law.
Yeah, Julie Law.
Yep, that's who that is. She's helping us for the stipend and then she gets a part of. The sponsors.
Okay, so they're contracted to go after the sponsors and then they get a percentage of.
Correct.
The contracts. Contracts.
So there's no money out of our pocket. We just receive less of the sponsorship.
Okay, fair enough. Um, page eighty-seven, it was mentioned a hundred and forty-three thousand for general liability insurance.
Yep.
Does that include if the city is sued? And taken to court, and if you lose, does that pay for the, those costs?
I, I, I don't know how the policies work. I know the city is so funded for a certain part of our general liability and then it's, the excess goes against the policy, but I don't know how that works with legal claims. So, I don't. I, I, I haven't been in tune with that yet, but I'm sure.
So we don't know what the max coverage we have for general liability?
Well, I know it is quite large, because the city's gotta have a lot, and you have a police force, a fire department, PDW, you gotta have some big.
Is it in excess of a hundred?
I, I don't know. I mean, we have the full policies. I don't know, that's, I can't, I, I can't, I don't even want to speculate, because I'm probably gonna be really wrong. So, I don't.
Well, is that, that's a good answer to follow up with you by email?
Yeah, I'll try to.
I, I think this is gonna become very relevant over this year.
While you're planning on suing the city?
No, but I'm sure, uh, Oregon State's gonna pass early lawsuits. Um, page seventy-five, community, community development, um, I noticed that there's, uh, no expenses for grant writing. Is that built into the contractual sort of expense? Basically days high?
Yeah, and, and, um, the mayor says it best. Mayor, explain the grants, how that, how there's a list that come, that comes out for grants and our city never.
All right, well, most people won't want to hear this, but the reality is when there's, there's grants available, a majority of them are based on community need. And they determine community need by community median income, those types of things. Riverview has a pretty high median income, so a majority of them, you don't even qualify. So we're just excluded right off the bat. So, uh, the other ones, obviously, it all comes down to community need. And I think to your point is, we don't, we don't have a grant writer. So that's usually, you know, assigned to the department head or, you know, somebody to do that.
But, but again, to your point, a lot of times when I'm fed some of these grants and I look into them and I call the DCC because they're all over these grants and they'll tell me, no Chuck, you're not gonna qualify for that. Then they send me a schedule and they say, yeah, Riverview's not on the schedule, so.
But with the DCC, we do, we do qualify for some grants as the, um.
Subrecipient or something, yeah.
If, if we're, if we're part of a group.
If we connect to another city somewhere or we're part of a bi-trail.
And the DCC does have people who are some responsibility, is doing the grant writing for, depending on what it is.
With Allen Park, when they tore down the movie theater, they got a grant.
That was through the Brownfield, through the DCC.
Right.
Yeah.
And that was five, fifty-five mil? Five mil?
It had to be five, because that pulled them out of, that pulled them out of that bad way.
I thought it was five, because, I mean, and, and the, it's not there yet, but the drawings are what's gonna be there. If it goes that route. But that came through the DCC, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why it's important to have you guys on the DCC and going to those meetings and.
I don't think he misses a meeting, because in four years, I've only been there twice.
And I went once for him, so.
I was gonna say, I know he makes everyone.
And raise an outside, Brian.
I was at the Downriver Town Hall this past weekend with Congresswoman Dingle and smaller local representatives. And asked that question about assistance from either federally or, or statewide or into the DCC with some monies for grant writer or, um, other assistance with grant writing matching. As we know, we don't have a lot of extra money, so a lot of these grants requires matching, is there any money that's available for that? And I did get a response and, and at, giving some contact persons. Also Wendy K got me in touch with, um, Jasmine. I don't quite recall her last name.
Darcy.
Yeah, from the DCC. And we wanted to speak about some, uh, grant opportunities. Um, so I, I, I'm interested in, in the grants. I think it's an opportunity that we've not been able to take advantage of for obvious reasons, but.
Yeah, we do look at drilling.
I know you do, yeah, so. I, I, I would offer, you know, I do write grants for my nonprofit, would offer any assistance, I can't hit no cost. Um, page seventy-six, uh, I noticed there's no expenses here for the bike path, Ironbell Trail. Is there any idea what the fifty-seven thousand was spent on last year? And why no expense this year?
That was the engineering cost to try and figure out what the plan could be, and it didn't seem like it was gonna be feasible.
So we had no plans for Ironbell Trail then?
No, but I still think that's gonna be pursued through the DCC. There, there, there's a, uh.
That's a green initiative, right?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, there's, I'm, so many different groups involved in this, so there's, there's a green initiatives.
When I filled in for you, that was the topic.
And, and, and there's, um, it will involve all the, um, from Rouge down to Gibraltar, I think, that's, that are part of that initiative.
So we're in there because we touched Jefferson and River, so Riverview was, um, actually named in that meeting I was at.
I mean, we're Sohail and Dave are still here, um, because we, we had in the past when they, when the county was planning to re, uh, repay, uh, West Jefferson. And we spent a number, so we, we spent some bucks on engineering a bike path, you know, in the construction of a new road. So I, it was like fifteen thousand dollars, you know, whatever the study was. And then, so we did that, and then the county changed their mind, said they're not gonna do the toll rebuild, they're just gonna repay, so. And the repay was not going to include the bike path, so we wasted fifteen grand.
No way of recouping that?
No.
Obviously not.
And to get out of Wayne County.
So, sorry, go ahead, Brian.
No, no, I, I appreciate that, that feedback and information. I, I was aware of, I'm waiting on the county for the repayment. In page seventy-eight, there was two hundred and twenty. And page seventy-eight, there was two hundred and twenty-three thousand in inspection and inspector fees. Um, I was just wondering, are we recouping that through the permits and inspection fees or residents pay? All these are a wash, aren't they?
Yes, that's what it's lucid, and that's based on what we've potentially, and new, uh, how they don't we budget on potential new construction and. A lot of that stuff, you have to have rotation, right? Inspection fees for rentals every so many years, inspection fees on additions. So, yes, I think it's budgeted so that it is funded by the rental.
The actual fee.
Yeah, the actual, supposed to wash to zero.
Okay, appreciate that. Um, page seventy-nine, there's, uh, mention of the senior transportation program lost during COVID. And, um, reinstating that, what's the projected cost for reinstating that?
I, I can't answer that, but I don't know, is that the?
Part of the twenty, that's the SMART money?
No, that's different, SMART's, SMART's different.
Okay.
So, I asked about the SMART, and we have enough in that fund to potentially start the SMART with getting a van and, you know, doing senior transportation. But I was told by the Recreation Director that that was not something that the council wanted to pursue. They didn't wanna get into that business, and I don't know when and how and where, but I need to look into that. But SMART, SMART, SMART provides money. Now, the problem with the van is you just, we would have to go out and get it, cause if we wait for SMART to get it to us, it'll take years. So, we have to put the money upfront, but I think they'll reimburse that. But, it's a program, and somebody's gotta run the program. So, you know, you do get administrative costs, you manage the program.
But I think that's different than this, I, I could be wrong.
It was a taxi program, and the people that were running it during COVID did not wanna have people coming in and out of their vehicles.
Didn't they use Trinity?
But didn't, didn't this money come from the CCGB money, the twenty grand, they, that was funded through that. And then obviously, they, they ran the program, and charged you two bucks or whatever it is to do that. And so, I'd say it ended during COVID.
I, I, I like the SMART program, I ran the SMART program somewhere else and it was very beneficial, but we gotta go through it. You know, there's a lot of mechanics and that would have to be decisions made by the people sitting around the table.
And that would be inner-city transportation for seniors?
Yes.
Okay.
There was dial-a-ride for, uh, for, uh, medical visits. And there was, uh, rides for stores. Walgreens, Walmart, Meyer, that kinda thing. So, all those kinda rides could be, you know, depending, and now, because ADA, I believe, the van has to be wheelchair accessible, so it's a different kinda van, and so there's, there's hoops. But to say that it can be done, but it's gotta be a program, it's gotta be an official program.
I do recall, um, reading about other cities which are, you know, much larger than ours, but they actually contract with Uber and get discounted rates. So, the residents could then basically essentially get a, a Uber ride, um, at their disposal for a much deeper discount.
I, I think the kicker there too is the ADA thing, because some of them might have wheelchairs and some of them have walkers. So, a lot of Ubers don't have ADA vehicles, so. I think some might, but not all, and that's the kicker. If you're gonna provide this service, you have to be compliant, ADA compliant.
I'll, uh, I'll re- revisit that and see how they made it work.
Okay.
Yeah, I just already answered that one. Um, page one oh two, there's roughly a hundred and about, a hundred thousand. Um, for administration, and I was just wondering what that hundred thousand administration item is for.
One oh two?
Four, no.
Three quarters, the way down.
Three quarters?
Two, four, three, by three, nine, six, five.
Maybe probably a hundred thousand, it's a hundred and four.
About a hundred, yeah. Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Four hundred. As we said before yesterday, that our administrative charges represent almost two mils and that's funds that, um, fund the city services. So, our administrative charges are taken from different funds and they fund city services. Meaning HR, payroll, county, part of the city manager's time when they work in different departments. So, it's an allocation.
So, that's all administration, not just single allocation?
Right, that's the whole city services. It's all the HR, it's all the budget and finances.
All those different people for each enterprise fund.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's how they're broken down.
Um. I think it was a good idea about the, uh, officer for Detroit Transportation Interdiction Unit. I, I know we haven't taken advantage of that for a long time, but it sounds like it's something we should probably return to. Um. And I, I appreciate the, the information, uh, Mayor Swift, about the apps on the meters. And, um, it sounds like for some residents it might be beneficial, I don't know what the cost of that would be, but I personally would use it, it sounds like some people on the table might. Um, and it was noted on page one thirty-two that the, the meter charge was forty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty, and that there's four thousand meters in the city. And I'm just wondering if the funds that we've collected over time, once we replace these meters, it sounds like we're coming to the end of the life on those meters. Is that money available to replace them, or is that something we're gonna have to make up, or it was shifted to another? Department or region?
Well, we still have fund balance in water and sewer funds, so we have to look at that.
So, we may or may not, or?
Well, I, hey, I don't know, I can't answer that right now, like, we'd have to look at that. That there is fund balance in, in water and sewer funds, so. We have a lot of projects, but it's also important to have good meters, right, so.
Right. It is, and we know their end of life. Uh, and then page one eighty, that talks about the, uh, shared services, and it mentions the Downriver Area Brownfield Consortium. And I was just wondering if that's still active and what the yellow means for other communities and others involved. Maybe Mayor Swift, you know, if that's still.
What do you, what, what are you talking, what's?
The Downriver Area Brownfield Consortium?
I'm not sure about that. I don't have, um, I don't have knowledge of that. I'm sorry, I'll have to.
That mu- that, well, just like, I'm not sure, but my guess is it's cause there is a, a brownfield authority at the DCC. Um, and if that's what this is referring to, it kinda looks like it.
How do we carry that forward from prior years, right? And that was probably.
I mean, we do have two active brownfields, but I'm not sure if that has anything to do with.
No, Brian's the chairman of the brownfields. So, you're easy, you're asking for the chairman, so.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of this.
Yeah, I think there is one there too, Mayor, I do.
Well, there is, and we, yeah, everybody wants it or something, but, uh. I'm not sure if that's what that's referring to.
Okay, um, maybe we'll look into it. But, um, maybe a suggestion going off the discussion earlier for shared services, working with some local communities to pull our resources for a grant writer. I think you've investigated that before, maybe read up, and looking into that.
Yeah, we've been talking about, us looking for interns or, um, a couple of different routes, yeah. We're trying to figure out how to get, if there's money available. Just qualifying for them is usually the.
Yes.
Yeah, we're trying. We're looking for new ways, new things to do.
Okay.
And we do have access to, there is, through, um, uh, SEMCO, that there's a grant writer app that we use to.
Um, and then one other thing is, uh, the, the discussion about the parcels that are being sold. Are those both gonna be bid together or separate parcels?
Oh, separate.
Great, okay. And the, the phrase you were looking for that Dave's been discussing for that property on City, uh, siblings called conditional zoning?
Yes.
So, that would allow.
Yep.
Purchasers to, to work with the city to change the zoning pretty easily, be flexible, it's a form of flexible zone. Um, and then this is just last question, I appreciate you, um, taking your time to answer these questions. Um, I was here for the, uh, plant Moran review, and it was mentioned that about five point five million was transferred from the water fund. And that three point seven, um, there's about three point seven million land preserve deficit, which was related to the cost of opening the new cell. As well as the golf course is breaking even, borrowing about two point five million for wa- from the water fund and land preserve. And I was just wondering where we're at with, uh, correcting that, I know you had put in, um. Help with the, the phrase for.
Deficit elimination plan?
Yeah, deficit elimination plan. So, the, if I understood the conversation earlier, slated to be out of that deficit within a year, was that correct?
It's scheduled and forecasted for June of twenty twenty-four, June thirtieth. And that, 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 that fund was a financial statement entry, not a ledger. And so, um, if you look at the financial statements, you'll see that the deficit was driven by, of course, the cell construction.
Yeah.
And so, that's a kind of like, you pay it upfront, you collect the revenues later. That's not to say the margins are great, but that's gonna help. Because now we're through all of that, all we really have left is our GCC S project of the drilling. And that can be offset by future revenue, so, that expense could go away as well, so. Um, we're on, by no means is all of the problems at the landfill solved, but we're on the right track. Because we're charting things and we're gonna wean ourselves from the landfill, as we talked about earlier today. Cause the landfill needs to. And I've asked for a complete estimate for closure, post-closure, of what does that really look like? So, we know, we're not just going by the state's calculation inflation factor, we gotta know, we have two hundred and fifteen acres that we're gonna have to maintain. What does it look like, putting a final cap on, a rubber layer, and all that dirt? And my fear is, where do you get all the dirt? They're not building another airport, and so the airport's not driving dirt somewhere free.
Or an old bridge.
Or an international bridge.
So, the international bridge.
They shouldn't have dredging a lot of sediment.
So, yeah, but, but, but to the bridge, we are working with the bridge company, but a lot of that dirt is not clean. It's impact, and so we can't really take that, we need, you can't close a landfill with impacted material, it has to be clean dirt. So, that's the cost of that. I don't know what that cost is, I'd be lying to you if I told you I knew it, but it, I know what dirt costs and I'm, I'm nervous that we've gotta start funding that, so.
Well, that's all my questions, and I appreciate your openness and candidness, and I apologize, I forgot to say Brian Webb, two zero two seven one, at the beginning.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
It's okay, I forgot last night, Brian. My name's Ed Moss, F eighteen, two, seven, eleven. I don't have any questions for you, but I do wanna clarify something I said yesterday. And I give you credit for that, you do deserve credit, because we don't have a finding instructor. Considering this has been your first budget as city manager, you are definitely to be commended, I would have commended you anyway, but given all of that, definitely. But not just you, but everybody who was a part of it.
That's right.
And that, and then with that, that's all I'm gonna say, so we can all go, thank you.
Apartment heads and.
They're not done yet.
Oh, oh, I didn't see him stepping up, I was walking late.
Uh, Don Janasty, one eight seven six six, Blake. Uh, I just wanna thank, uh, the city manager and Heather for the hard work that they did for the budget, I know how difficult this time is uh, to do budget work, and I just wanna briefly talk about the interdiction officer. I was, uh, responsible for getting that officer out to the airport, and I worked very hard to do that. And, and when that officer was out there, he gains a lot of experience that he doesn't get here in the city. And it, it's a very important position, and during the time that officer was out there, uh, and we also had an officer in Drano at the time. That, those officers brought in money, and Dean can, uh, verify this. I purchased all vehicles, all weapons, all, anything, any equipment, uh, for the police department with that forfeiture fund. So, it's a very important position, and I hope the, uh, council takes that into consideration when, uh, Chief Allen goes to get an officer out there. It's hard to get a guy out there once you lose that position. I had to work very hard to get that officer and Dean helping me, allowing the city manager to get that position out there. And I just want council to be aware how important that position is for the city, for the experience the police officers get, and for the money that they do bring into the city to save, uh, during the budget time. And that's all, I'd just like to thank everybody.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Don, and the morale?
Uh, and the morale for the police department. And, and the officer is limited to the time he's out there, so we can rotate other officers out there, which gives, uh, you know, the officer something to look forward to uh, in that position, so, and, and they do get a lot of experience out there. Uh, I don't know, is Drano still in effect right now? I don't know, cause that was a good position too.
I, I know.
It didn't bring the money in, the airport interdiction team brings in the big money. Uh, but the Drano was a lot of good experience for the officers, because they get experience in warrants and other things that they don't get by working the road. So, I, I hope council takes that into consideration when, uh, the chief can get that position open again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chad, it's your turn.
I'm good.
Just here for the show?